I'd like to call to order the Cup of County Planning Commission meeting for February. We welcome you all here. Happy Valentine's Day to all those who pressed their way out and to be here with us this evening. But we do also want to ask everyone to keep the citizens of Kansas City and the situation that happened there today in our prayers. And anybody who has a cell phone, unless Jesus is calling, we'll go ahead and turn those on or off if you're expecting a call from them. But it's no problem. You don't have to. It's Valentine's Day. All right. It's Valentine's Day. Yes, no problem. But we just asked that we will keep them in the prayers. And the police officers in Washington, DC that were checked today, we just ask everyone to keep them in the prayers. Now, next order of business is approval of our agenda that's before us. Any additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move case Z-459-23-1 to be the first piece of business and new business.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Any other changes, any other additions or deletions? If not, all in favor of the changes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Okay. That change has been made. Now, the next order of business is approval of the minutes from our January 10th meeting. We had those in our packets on board, Pat. Thanks to Morgan. And if anyone has a motion, the chair entertainer at this time.
Sir, let me approve that.
Second?
Second.
All right. No need to vote on that. We'll put those to the record, the minutes to record. Now, we move to our new business. As we heard earlier, the second case on our list has been changed, Z-459.23-1. Neil, we turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have case Z-459.23-1. It's a request by Red Aces Capital Management, Ari Firuz Abadi, to rezone 17.6 acres from RA, rural area, to LI, light industrial. The property is located along Route 3, Germana Highway, in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map 51, parcels 85A and 86. Mr. Chairman, you have at your place is a letter dated February 8th, 2024, addressed to the Planning Commission. The reports went out and the applicant received staff reports, and they are requesting deferral until next month's meeting at a minimum. And so, staff would suggest that you honor that request. And we do have a year, not that it will take a year, to consider rezoning. So there is ample time for them to adjust to the staff comments and concerns that were raised.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, sir. Is the applicant or representative for the applicant here, we hear that at this time before we vote?
Good evening, Rex Edwards.
Good evening, Rex.
Representing the applicant, Chairman Reeves, Vice Chairman Thornhill, members of the commission. As you have before you, the letter explains, I think, in some detail that the report received from staff was pretty illuminating as to some of the areas of concern. There are areas that the applicant thinks that it can address, probably with some revision of proffers, but also with just some more study. And if the commission is inclined to set it over for a month when we return before you again, we'll have the adequate people here to not only have addressed some of the issues in advance, but also provide some perhaps more in-depth responses to any questions that could still be remaining. So happy to answer any questions, but hopefully you have what you needed for you at this time.
Okay, Rex. Anyone have any questions for? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. So thirty day deferral is what to ask for. Okay. Out of respect for those who might have come, we did advertise a public hearing for this. Is there anyone who had come just to speak on that application? Okay. Good. So we won't have to open it. Okay. We hear the applicant's request. Chair entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that case Z-459-23-1 be deferred until our next monthly meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Being none all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. We will have it deferred until our next monthly meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That case is closed, and now we'll move to the next case.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have a case number U-2244-23-1. It's a request by Robert Ferguson of Cibola Farms for a conditional use permit to allow operation of a recreational vehicle park slash campground per Article 3-2-2.5, referenced in Article 2, or Article 4-2-2.1 of the zoning ordinance, and in accordance with Article 17, use permits. Article 9-1-4, special provisions of the zoning ordinance is also considered in this application. That's the campground code. The property is zoned RA, rural area, and it's accessed off 629 Scotts Mill Road in the Catawba Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map 29, parcel 110. Mr. Chairman, if you will, I'll quickly summarize. If you'll notice on the board here, parcel highlighted in red is the subject parcel. I believe it's 269 acres, zoned rural area. I'll start, though. Let me back up, and if you'll bear with me, I'll, you know, the authority to issue conditional use permit, I'll read those conditions. Keep that in mind, sir, if you will.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Seventeen dash one, basis for issuance, use permits may be issued for any conditional uses for which use permits is required by provisions of this ordinance, provided that the governing body, upon recommendation by the planning commission, shall find that after a duly advertised hearing, the use will not, one, adversely affect the health and safety of persons relating or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use; two, be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood; three, be in conflict with the purposes of the comprehensive plan of the county of Culpeper. Use permit conditions, in granting any use permit, the governing body shall designate such conditions as it determines necessary to carry out the intent of the ordinance. And I'll just remind you that there's no substantial court finding that you have to do with this, with this conditional use permit. That being said, I'll start with, you know, this is an existing farm. It's been there for 20 years, raising bison. It's got a current, ongoing agritourism operation. The campground is contemplated as a substantial impact under that kind of use, and it's also contemplated in Article 9, as I mentioned, and there is code regulating campgrounds. Comprehensive plan, I'll just mention one thing from the staff report. I won't read the staff report back to you. Well, one thing that jumped out at me, the vision, one of the visions in Chapter 2, Land Use and Development, the vision is to preserve the predominantly agricultural and rural nature of Culpeper County while providing opportunities for growth in identified areas at appropriate scale. Moving on to agency reviews, VDOT, Health Department, Culpeper Soil and Water Conservation District all weighed in on this application. Much of their comments would be deferred, well, not deferred, but forthcoming site plans, which would be required with any conditional use permit. Much of their concerns would be addressed at that point. VDOT, you know, stressed the need for a commercial entrance to be installed with site distance that is appropriate. Many of you have been up Scotts Mill Road. You know, I believe there's an existing, you know, fairly large agricultural entrance that serves the property to date. I don't think, I don't believe that any new entrances are proposed. The Department of Health weighed in. Their comment indicated that they have a special use permit for campgrounds that has their own criteria, where they monitor wells and septic systems, and that would be a requirement of any forthcoming site plan as well. The Culpeper Soil and Water Conservation District brought up a number of, number of points. The one that stands out to me that would not be covered by code would be riparian buffers, that they suggested at least 35 feet from any stream for any development areas. And moving on to staff concerns and recommendations, you know, staff has a concern about the potential noise to overnight stays, hence the impact of the area. The applicant is present, and he can address those, those concerns. Staff would put forth five, five conditions that I'll, I'll read through, if you'll bear with me. Condition number one, if, if this conditional use permit is approved, we would like you to consider that, number one, no noise from the proposed conditional use shall emanate beyond the subject parcel property line at any time that exceeds the current nighttime decibel limits for rural area zoning district, which is 65 decibels, as found in Chapter 10A of the county code. Number two, the applicant shall construct a commercial entrance in accordance with VDOT minimum standards prior to commencement of operations. Number three, the applicant shall provide details with subdivisions, or submission of, excuse me, a submission of forthcoming site plan, both of the park model cabin sites and the RV camping sites, inclusive of road access, grading, well, and septic improvements, electrical connections, and other relevant information. Number four, a riparian buffer of a minimum of 35 feet shall be established along any tributaries on the property. And number five, the use shall be non-transferable and only for the current land owner and operator. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it over back to you, and the applicant is present. There is an aerial on the, on the board there that maybe would be helpful for all of us to speak to him.
Okay. All right. I want to listen to you. I have one question for the staff.
This is a staff question. So the sketch is what I would call that on the GIS map. What is the distance from that boundary to the muddy run or whatever that run is right there?
I would, I would estimate a couple hundred feet. I don't know exactly.
But he didn't provide any engineering to tell us?
No, ma'am. They did not. The applicant did provide concept plans with their application.
But they're sketches.
Which, which minimum requirements are of administrative site plan often are not very explicit, but at the site plan phase, that would be forthcoming.
Okay. Is the applicant or a representative for the applicant here, please come to the podium and give you a full name for the record, please.
My name is Robert Ferguson. Good evening, and thanks for taking the time to take a look at our project.
Yes. Have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I mean, Neil summed it up pretty well. We've been raising bison for about 20 years, and in order to keep the farm viable and in agriculture, we had the idea of adding these agritourism overnight stays. We originally, just so that you have full context, we originally were going to put a farm winery in, and we spent about three and a half years setting that up. And then we kind of thought that for quality of life and the neighborhood, this was a better, you know, direction to move in. A small collection of camp, I mean, the whole thing is laid out, so if you have questions, I can answer them. But a small collection of RV sites in that small area behind our corral, so vehicles would be coming in and out of there. The bigger zone up there was really, we have one, well, actually, we have two cabins now, which you have pictures of. They're actually agricultural office trailers that we've had there for years. The one has been there for years. The other one, we're just adding for personal use. But we experimented with renting it out for a couple of months, and it's worked out spectacularly. People coming in, super interested in what we're doing agriculturally, and spending days learning, walking, and participating in the farm. So that's really where the, the idea comes from.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Sure.
Do you want me to sit down or stand?
No, you can stand there, because I got a feeling we have some questions for you. Okay. At this time, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Price, we can start with you first.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Sir, will you have a maximum, maximum occupancy of your units? Like, no more than this many people will be in the mobile home types, and this many people, no more than this many will be in the RV sites?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, our intention is, you know, as I, it's mentioned in the description here, but these, the park models are small. They're 400 square feet, and they really sleep, there's, there's one bed. It sleeps two people. So that, we would be limiting to that. We've had people with small children, so we've said that they can have two adults and up to two small children, but that, that's our maximum we've been using. So I agree, we, we would, you know, for the most part, all the recommendations that the office has put together, we, we agree with all of it. And any concerns you guys have that you want to add, we're open to all of that as well. Our intention is not to create an event center with a lot of people. Our intention is to bring couples in and small, you know, children, families to experience agricultural event, like, you know, just participating in the farm.
So if it's two parents and four small kids, that's too many, and they couldn't come?
Right. There's no sleeping space for that. We don't want to accommodate any special needs for that. I mean, if, if somebody brought in two RVs and, you know, had a couple of kids in each one, that would work. But yeah, we would, I'm not exactly sure that, I guess we get to put the restrictions on it, but we would say no more than four people per unit or per site.
Yeah, which leaves the other question is, if you set standards, then how do you enforce those? And if you have a unit that is playing music loud outside at night, do you have somebody on site there who can respond immediately, or do somebody from their surrounding area, do they have to call somebody else to come out there and enforce it?
Oh, no, no. We, we, my business partner, Mike, is here as well. We live on the property. We've got currently one additional employee working, living on the property, and we're probably going to add one more employee that can live on the property. So there will be always at least two to four people. We have 350 bison, and they're sensitive and dangerous. And so, we have no intention of allowing noise that would disturb the business operation, let alone our neighbors, which, you know, we have had, we've been there for more than 20 years, and we've had great relationships with the neighbors. We would be definitely looking to keep that up.
Okay. And would the RVs be allowed to go in and out around the clock?
That's a good question. In and out, you mean like passing between the front gate and the campground area?
Well, yeah, out the gate, down the road, and then come back later.
Yeah, I mean, some people use, so we have RVs ourselves. This is kind of why I got into the whole thing. We've had RVs for years. Some people have RVs that that's their, that's their main vehicle. It's not necessarily, when we rented the cabin in the back, we did that for two and a half months at the end of last year, like I said, just to test it out and see if we really wanted to do this before we submitted the application. People would come and go pretty regularly. So it, there would be in and out, but not significantly more than what we have at the farm now. So on an average, main season, like spring to fall day, Saturday and Sunday, we've got 50 to 70 people visiting the farm. We have a farm store. We've always had self-guided walking tours. And so, it's a, it's a big, and then we've been on a farm tour for, I don't know how many years, maybe 15. It's drawn a lot of attention, so we're pretty well-known in the DC area. So we already have a lot of coming and goings, but in the 20 years we've been doing it, there hasn't been one traffic, you know, event, or neighbor event, or obnoxious visitor that we couldn't maintain directly.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That's all from you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else?
So at the, sorry, at the, the sites, will there be fire pits? Are they allowed to bring in portable campfire pits?
That's a good question. Part of our thinking is that, well, part of the experience is grilling bison burgers and steaks, because we have unlimited supply of that. So there would be, in our minds, some kind of cooking outdoors. But we haven't really wrapped our heads around, like, fire pit concepts. We clearly don't want a fire hazard for our main structure or our business, so it's something that we'd have to contemplate. And, I mean, I have thought about, you know, putting something in that is managed and structured so that we get to control what somebody's doing, whether, you know, so they're not just maybe on their own without us realizing, creating a bonfire, you know, out there. But it's something that we haven't put 100% planning to that particular question.
Okay. And then will there be, so at, at different RV sites and stuff, I know there's like certain times that it's kind of like a quote unquote lights out, like, you know, you can't be playing music after this point. If you, they have fire pits, like, all that's got to be put out, you know, at 10:00 PM or whatever.
Yeah.
Will there be that type of a mandate in place?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I mean, I'd probably venture to say, like I said earlier, just to keep disturbance for the livestock production down, we'd probably say no music outside your RV, you know, nothing past 9:30 or 10 o'clock for any kind of outdoor sort of participation noise group thing. We, we would make it very clear to people visiting that the intention is that they're participating in agritourism, you know, opportunity for them, that it's not, we're not running a campground the way that the federal or state campgrounds or commercial campgrounds are doing. It's very much the intention is to be geared towards an agritourism experience.
Okay. You'll add?
So, just to follow up on a couple things. I think Commissioner Price was talking about the in and out scenario. I guess my concern would be the lights associated with people coming and going, you know, if that was the case. But if you do, I would recommend a restriction or condition that restricts a certain time, that basically that it would be have a quiet time at a certain time, which also would mean people coming and going, you know, at a certain time. So that way, you don't have a whole lot of light. I know most of the area, it looks like a lot of the area there is wooded. That would be cleared, you know, basically?
Oh, no, no. It's actually, so the small pink part is the RV. The whole thing has been sort of put down as an RV campground, but the intention is, those two little park models, they're actually little cabins, and they would go in the back. So the only people going back there would be a car to go stay in a cabin, so not RVs going to that big zone.
Yeah, I was saying more like-
We're calling it RVs because those park models are legally RVs designated by the DMV in the state of Virginia. And the pictures you have, those things that are, look like cabins, are actually technically RVs. So we would be putting five of those back there. Like I said, we already have one back there. We're putting a second one back there right now. One is his and one is mine, and if we don't get the use permit, we were planning on doing that anyway. Like I said, his been there for about eight years, maybe? They come in on wheels, they stay on wheels, and so because they're legally RVs, we just thought we would make one single permit. We, we chose those, by the way, and this isn't really your question, but, so that we wouldn't be making permanent, like, structures on the farm. They can be quickly picked back up, you know, there's going to be a little landscaping around them, let's say, but they can be sold. We bought his for $50,000. It's worth $120,000 now, so it's not really a bad, you know, sort of investment thing. If we were to put in actual cabins, which was one of our thinking, original thoughts, it would be foundations and structure, and there'd be infrastructure on the land. But this is going to have a very low impact on the land. So the intention is not to clear really any trees. The one that's in your paperwork that's black, that we're putting in right now, we specifically didn't even change the ground. We built a support structure, and we're setting it on top of that, just a little like wooden structure, so we didn't clear, I think we cleared one tree, maybe? But that's our intention, is not to clear anything. In the campground zone, that's actually where we were storing agricultural equipment. And same thing is that we're leaving all the trees. Because we're RVers, and we love going to places that have lots of greenery, the intention was to have the spaces really far apart, lots of trees in between, and facing out to the bison field, so that you would be sitting and looking in that direction. So there'd be very little tree removal at all.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, basically, I was just, today I was just looking at Google Earth and looking at where the seven camping sites are. I looked, pretty, a fairly wooded area.
Yeah.
So I was trying to envision how you're going to actually move RVs in and out of those areas without having it somewhat cleared, you know?
Yeah.
To be able to, to get it in and out of there.
The agricultural equipment that we're storing there was big, like RV type, so it's already well laid out for that. There's very little, like, maybe more tree trimming than removal.
Okay. Was there an evaluation done for the area where the cabins are, or looked at in terms of how you're going to control safety in that area? Is it going to be a lighted area at night? And is that going to illuminate the area on the adjacent property at all?
Oh, that's a good question. We weren't really planning, we, we have very, we put in these little lights so that our visitors can get back there. They're solar, they just illuminate, like, just on the ground. You can't see them from anywhere. That's the kind of lighting that we would intend to put in. Having, you know, dealing with emergency vehicles is another topic. We've already been working with the county, his cabin is on the farthest back. It's just on the very edge of that pink. And so, it's a mile from the front road, so we had to work it out, you know, for emergency already. So we'd have to deal with those with the other additional cabins that we'd put in. But they, the reason why it's selected like that is we haven't picked the exact spots. We wanted them to be secluded, far from each other, meaning that you wouldn't be able to see another cabin, and, you know, accessible to the electricity and the water system.
The last thing I had was, just because I didn't see it noted in here, was, has there been any consideration to stormwater management for the site, the increased impervious area that would be added to the site? Just because you're adjacent to the stream?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I wasn't sure that, that was the word you said. It's hard to tell on this flat map, but it's actually incredibly steep all along that stream. The, the distance from the stream when walking up to where there might be a couple of cabins, distance-wise, is hard to say.
Minimum 350 feet or more. Plus, I just would like to interject on that.
Let me, sir, you have to come up and give your name.
I'm Mike Sykes. I'm the other co-owner of Cibola Farms. I'm Mike Sykes. I'm the other co-owner of the Cibola Farms operation that we have. I wanted to point out, one answer is that we're about 350 feet away from the creek to where the RV area would be. It's up in a pretty far high elevation. We also, at the original setup of our operation, we met with soils and conservation grants, so that I have 15-foot riparian areas away from my fence lines, away from the edges of the creek, so that we don't have any runoff or anything like that, even from our livestock. So in bringing in the RV operation, we were being well in managed of keeping that, one, anything extra going in my fields, because my bison, we don't want anything going into our meat product that we're distributing that we wouldn't eat. And then, that would also keep the big buffer away from our neighbors and seeing lights and noise down, which is, because I live there 24 hours, I would definitely be keeping it on a level of management for sure. Because I didn't get into this to be an RV owner, or RV park owner, but for the agritourism's sake, that the way that the public's going is only going to be more beneficial to us as well as the county, I would believe.
Okay. I guess the last thing related to that, I guess in terms of condition number three, it didn't mention stormwater, so I'd just like that included in that condition, if that's, because you're going to have to address it at site plan phase anyway. But we, one of the tasks that we have as part of CIP is looking at environmental impacts with the development, so there would be additional runoff that would be created by the units. So we just would like to make that addition. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So-
Okay, so I have some, um, questions as far as the, the drain fields that will be associated with the cabins and then also a well. And each cabin gets its own well, are they sharing the well? Each cabin has its own drain field. There's a lot of unanswered questions and even for the first, you know, folks that were talking with you. So, and we have no engineering from any soil scientist. So we're taking your word, which is okay, but you're not an experienced developer, if you will. So, uh, what, what is your thoughts on the drain fields? Because if you make a drain field, then you've got to clear these trees that are going to be the buffer to all the folks that are either sitting here or they have a house right across that creek. And you will be higher, then it's down to the creek, and then it's back up to them. So if they're coming and going and where are the lights and et cetera, I think that your neighbors will be impacted on that backside around that, uh, camp area. And it's an undefined total acreage. It's like supposed to be twenty-five acres, but it's lines on a chart at the moment. It doesn't look like it's scale, to scale.
Yes, I, so you're a hundred percent right, I totally agree with you. We, to be honest, you know, this, like you said, isn't necessarily our line of business, meaning putting together proposals and setting up development sites. I have no problem selecting the five sites and making it very specific, um, for further consideration. That space back there is actually quite large. When back there, I don't, like, we can't see any of the neighbors at all. We, we can take for sure into consideration, 'cause we haven't picked the exact sites yet, to ensure that any vehicle movement is moving, you know, in and away from the property lines. That's very easy to do. As a matter of fact, that too, we have already are going in, into the center of the farm, um, as it is now. To answer the question about, um, the, so there, there's one well on the property, it's in the middle. And we got really lucky when it was drilled, it, the guy that put it together for us, it, it has enough water volume for fifty houses. So we've been using it for the entire property to cover all the livestock. It has a great flow and we use it for the cabin in the back now. Um, and so we would just continue to use that, so there'd be no additional well digging necessary. I'm not an expert at all in drain fields, but I'm assuming that working with the regulations that Neil referenced, we would just have to be following specific site location selection based on what is the, you know, most ecological.
Can you get a drain field there, close enough?
Yeah, right. So that, like I said, it was really access to electricity, water and drain field was the, and then the, how it looks, which addresses your mention of not having lights shining into the neighbors' properties. Uh, that, those are all big considerations that we would be taking into consideration.
But you haven't done any actual engineering of those decisions? So if you're asking us to approve it without those decisions being made, it goes to what the site plan situation, Neil, and that's where it's a staff decision there?
Chairman Thor, uh, excuse me, Cindy, Ms. Thornhill, um, the site plan phase has certain criteria that, that would meet some of your concerns. But it's, uh, it, it's wholly appropriate to, to put conditions, you know, in your motion that, that would address these finer points.
Right. So I, I would say a couple of things that are my opinion, not everyone else, it's just me. All right, so I don't think there should be any amplified music, okay? And I think that the riparian buffer of thirty-five feet is, you know, it's, it is, I've been up on that property and it is like this down to muddy run. So why isn't it gonna be not three hundred and fifty, but something more than thirty-five feet is like to the back of the room? So I'm just saying, because the drain fields are going to drain out somewhere and downhill is where they're gonna go, and that creek is there. And then I, I think that, um, the V dot entrance area, if you haven't already asked them about, is it already a commercial entrance?
Uh, I'm, I wouldn't know the definite, the definition of one.
All right, so you haven't checked with them really to make it more traffic in and out? Because the other thing is there's site distance through there that they have to calculate precisely. So I guess you'll pick that up on your site plan also, but, um, I, I think that consideration of the neighbors is a really big issue for me. And that just box thrown in there seems to be a little close to that. And it's a big piece of property, can it go up more towards the middle? That kind of thing. So I guess, um, the majority of it's gonna be what the health department tells you about the drain field locations. And can use one well for all of that water. I don't know what the criteria are on that well, what respects on that well. That's what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, just a couple of questions. Uh, you, you show an RV septic dump site, is that gonna be like a dump and haul kind of activity?
Uh, no, that's actually, we have a septic system there right now. Uh, and so, and it has an out, it already has an outlet because I have an RV. Uh, but so it would be, you know, depending on the engineering and approvals and all that. But the intention is to have the RVs when they leave, this is common in a campground, when they come and go, they would pull around and they would dump into the, into that septic field system.
Okay, so that's a septic field, not a, not a dump and haul kind of situation?
No, no, no.
Okay, okay. I, I was a little confused. I, I think we're talking the, the same thing here, but in, in part of the application talks about ten sites. You're actually talking about seven RV sites and five of your mobile whatever sites, right?
Uh, yeah, there might be, there might be a reference somewhere erroneously to ten, but we changed it to twelve. So the intention was seven in the small pink square and five in the larger area.
Okay, and, and you would have any problem putting a condition in that it's limited to seven and five?
Oh, yeah, no problem at all.
Okay, a- and you talk about the, the length of stay, you're talking about, uh, you're not talking about long-term camping here, right?
Right, I, I don't remember what I wrote in here, but seven to ten days is what our general maximum stay thoughts were.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Um, the commissioner's covered a lot of, got a lot of answers for me. I'll just say, one of the most important things that you reminded me of is that this is a subordinate and supportive use in addition to the bison, the raising of the bison. And in fact, that you said they need to be, have a quiet environment, uh, for the, so I would just say, you've explained to me that your intent is that it is supportive and that over time, tell me, you're, you're not thinking that, hey, that this might be so successful, we're gonna start shrinking our pasture and all of a sudden we, we are gonna become a campground with more people and more traffic and stuff. So, and you're saying this will remain supportive with twelve spaces?
Right, absolutely. We're, we're, there's an organization called Harvest Toast, I don't know if you've ever heard of it, but it, it, a lot of people in the county are using it right now. RVs are already going to wineries and farms and spending one night, there's no services. Um, we just wanted to take that idea, make it official, but the whole thing is just to support the farm business. Yeah, we have no desire or intention to do any, that's why these numbers that I included in here, the twelve is this wide end of it, I mean, we may only do this campground spaces and two cabins, you know, for the next two or three years and see how that goes, but there's no intention of expansion at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, thank you for presenting tonight. I kinda, I, I see where you're going with this idea. Um, I, I like the boutique look of this, and you mentioned the DC area, and the people probably wanna get out of the city, come see your beautiful spot. My concern is the electricity that's gonna be needed to power all that, how do you have all of those RVs situated? Are they gonna be backup generators? Is, what's gonna power all the RVs?
Uh, that's a good technical question, I'm not sure that I can answer, except that we, we put electricity all the way across the farm when we first got it. So we've got it running all the way through there. And then now we can just tap into that, and so we've got a plan in place with our commercial electrician uh, to provide fifty amp, so we, so in the small space where the seven RV, um, spots are, we would provide fifty amp electrical service and water, and then the sewage would be the dump that we were just talking about. Um, so there's, technically, as far as I understand from our commercial, commercial electrician, it's all doable for that.
It's doable, so running that power out there, you're gonna bury those lines, you're gonna run them on poles?
Oh, no, everything, everything, including the, the electricity that I mentioned, we had put in a long time ago is all underground.
Okay, so, eh, does your commercial, and this is, you know, speculative, really, a commercial electrician had experience of running underground power through a forest where you're probably gonna have to cut some stumps and, and remove a lot of trees and?
Uh, well, we have the whole thing mapped, it's actually on, one of the things that I submitted, it's just a crude drawing of the way that RVs would come in, it's just a circle, the electricity in the water would actually go in the center of the road.
Okay.
So there's no trees already in this place. This is how we got in and out of our, uh, equipment storage.
How much land do you propose to clear for the, uh, the upper portion, the five?
We don't plan to clear anything at all, except the, I think the, they're about, um, how long, how long are the units? So they're about forty-seven feet long and about nine feet wide, so it just, and as a matter of fact, as I mentioned earlier, the one that's in your packet there with, that's black, um, we just took one tree down. And we didn't level any of the ground, so we're intending to do that with these five is, um, they, they, you just put them up on supports, so there's no foundation, there's no clearing the ground. It just need to be trees out of the way so that they can be set onto the supports.
The one building towards the, um, top portion of the five park mode cabin site, is that like a run-in, is that livestock run-in, what, what's, is that a building, is that one of the cabins or?
That's one of the cabins.
That is one of the cabins, 'cause I'm looking at all the clearing around the cabin. Is that gonna be what a typical cabin looks like, or do you want?
That's because he lived there for many years, so he made a lawn and, but no. The, the, like I said, the black one that we're putting in right now has absolutely no, um, it has a place to park a car, but that's it.
Okay, and that, so that also leads me, um, RV park, I see, eh, uh, any intention of trails, ATVs, um, biking trails, walking trails?
We have trails. When I bought the property from Joe Kinslow, he had it, uh, logged, and we maintained all of the logging roads so that we have trails.
So they're there already?
Yeah, so the intention is to encourage people to walk. We have all these people coming already right now, taking self-guided walking tourists. We've been doing that for fifteen years, um, mostly to see the bison, but they end up having to walk sometimes all the way back to Paul's property.
So, so no, um, like, I, I know a lot of, um, campers on the back, they, they have their bikes and their, their dirt bikes and their mopeds and whatever.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's, I, I see those a lot on a lot of RVs, so not your intention to open those up to motorized traffic?
No, we would not allow any, probably any equipment, it would just be foot only. Again, for the livestock, for the safety, security, for, you know, insurance reasons, all kinds of, yeah.
Right, and then, um, one suggestion, I know it's not, not here tonight, uh, but a site plan would help us. Like a, a formal site plan would probably eliminate a lot of these questions that we had tonight, so.
Right.
I look forward to seeing one if this goes through. Um, eh, eh, I think, and in just my opinion, that it needs to get deferred, just so we give them more time to answer questions and, and get what they need. Um, I think it supports your farm, I, I don't think it's, obviously I wanna hear if there's neighbors here, I'd love to hear from them. I'm not sure if we have time for that tonight. Eh, are we doing a public? W- we are, okay, good, good, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, nice, uh, thanks for coming and presenting this. I'm, after hearing you speak, I really like your vision of this, all this, I think it's a great idea. I think there was a lot of concerns, people here, RV park campground, the typical KOA-type campground, rowdy, partying loud, carrying on, um, obviously that's not your intent here. I think it fits with the farm, I, you know, fellow commissioners flushed out a lot of questions I had and concerns. I'm in support of your vision and idea, but I don't think there's enough here for me personally to vote yes on this. I'd, I'd like some more information and more finite answers to some of these things. That's, that's all my concerns, 'cause once we approve something, that's, that's it. And if it's not in there, it's not in there, or if it's not spelled out clearly, there's gray areas and, you know, this is, um, we just need more finite information, I think, um, that's my opinion. But no, your vision and what you wanna do, I'm, I'm in support of it, I think it's a great idea. But I would like to hear from your neighbors and their concerns as well, um, and see if we can address their concerns as a part of this application as well, but thanks for coming.
All right, I think we heard from, um, from everyone, and, um, a lot of questions have been asked, and I think you can, um, understand, the questions, um, from a standpoint of not having enough in front of us, you know, at this, uh, particular point. Um, you know, good idea, um, for additional use, um, of your land, Mr. Ferguson. Um, the, um, the Buffalo Rome, I didn't real, I actually didn't realize you had tours, you know, you could have tours and all. I have this question, uh, just a couple. One is, um, you, you said, you know, we have RVs, then we have the campers, then we have what you were showing us that almost looked like a little cabin. Now, the cabins are permanent stay, right? You, those, how many of those you already have?
We have two.
And you're planning on having how many?
Five.
Five, and they will be permanent there?
Well, like I said, they come in on wheels, and so the one that you see that has a red roof, it looks solid and it looks attached to the ground, but it's actually sitting up on a chassis. So then it's only as permanent as the landscaping around it.
So you, you had said that it'd be, um, maybe like a ten-day stay would be the maximum, but if you were using one of those, it's still ten days and someone else has, someone else has it up?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not, all right. You mentioned about the sewer, and you said, um, they will be dumping into your drain field? But you have a, you have a sewer tank there also, so they're gonna be dumping into your tanks, so?
No, not the, not our house, the, it's in a, it's in our workshop area, so nobody's currently living on it and using it. Um, so it's, it's just available for this.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, capacity, but you know, um, um, the health department and all would have to look at that, but I was, you know, that many of them, and you say, you know, I mean, fifty gallons of that, um, that waste. I, I have a camper and, and, and do all those, and, um, for the past three years and enjoying it. Um, but the, um, that's a, it's a lot of, um, sewage when you think, and when we look at the number that you're speaking of. I'm just wondering, um, something's going, would definitely have to be done when it comes to that part of, you'd never hold on all of that.
No, I, I realize, I mean, we didn't put that in with this in, intention, it was already in.
Yeah, 'cause someone, um, asked you earlier, was it a pump and haul, or was, it, it's, it's gonna have to be pump more frequently than, you know, I mean.
Right, right, I mean, I, I, again, it's not my area of expect, expertise, but I was expecting that the, it would have to be expanded or a second one put in, or I, you know, I'm, we're open to whatever.
That might take up half of your, would you, eh, it's, it's a lot when it comes to.
Well, we ha, we've got a lot of fields, as a matter of fa, open pasture, and this one is sitting in an open pasture, meaning like, it's just.
The only other question I have for you, Mr. Ferguson, is, uh, when it comes to, um, one, one thing that would concern me is the conveyance of this. You know, I know, I kinda understand what your plan might be, and, um, I think, um, Doug, you had asked earlier about, um, you know, KOA and not turning it into one of those, but, um, Neil, that's, that, it would, um, once we, um, give access, um, that condition for camping, then it can convey with the property.
If you put that condition on the, on the use for net, on the apple, for this version, then you have people to sell, you usually have, but not people.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. Okay, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Ferguson? Very good job, thank you, sir, okay. You almost had me when you said the steaks and the burgers and all that, I was like, let him go, let, let, let's, let's. You almost had me when you said the steaks and the burgers and all that. I was like, let him go, let, let, let's, let's vote right now and get this, okay. At this time, perfect for Valentine's Day, we'd be out eating right now, right? Now, open to public hearing, those who might have come to, uh, speak on this application, you have that opportunity right now and raise your hand. Um, and we'll be, uh, you'll be recognized by the chair and, um, come forth and give your full name, um, for the record and, and, um, and we try to stay within two minutes and, you know, we come and, okay? All right. Yes. Sure. No yelling in, we can't have any yelling in here, okay?
Well, excuse me, I have asked, I'm gonna clear my throat a lot.
It's a challenge I've had for a long time.
Wait a minute, did you take your wife's cellphone because it went off early?
Yeah, no, I have, uh, it's, you, you have, uh, the heart going on, right? I took it 'cause I, uh, her name isn't, I'm Michael Bremel, under Vince, Bremel Vincent, A, code T at Al. We're, uh, I think we're right across, hey, nice to see you guys. You haven't seen for years. Yeah. So, um, yeah, I just, we're, we probably would have the parcels that would be affected maybe the most, probably, right across the street.
Um, sir?
I'm sorry.
You have to, you were strictly dressed, dressed in that second.
So I think we're right across, um, trying to get my bearings here. I got this, um, in the mail and haven't really had time to look at it. But I believe we're right across the street on Scotts Mill and there's, uh, those will be houses there. And, uh, so my concern, first of all, I'm not against it at all or for it. I just don't know the details.
Sure.
So a couple of things would be the lights, um, 'cause there would be homes right across the street that are not there now. Um, and noise. Uh, we would also be downstream, I believe, from, from this, um, on the stream. I think it's called Muddy Run. I'm not sure what the name of it is. Uh, and I did, um, Ms., Mrs. Thornhill, I thought it was a good idea. Maybe it's a big property. I don't, and maybe some reasons Rob and Mike had it at that location, but maybe it could be moved back further. Um, but, you know, the details are, there's a lot of things that I don't know. And, um, great thought on Rob and Mike's. I mean, the bison farm is very nice and we all like to support agro-tourism. I'd just like more information on that. And the lights and the noise, it looks to me like it's pretty close to those, to Scotts Mill Road. And, uh, Ms. Thorn, Thornhill had a, a thought about maybe moving that back. Um, would each of those sites have a separate, um, drain field or septic system?
There's, uh, Neil, it's not a separate, um, it's.
They wouldn't necessarily have to.
You don't have to.
They're, they're, you're not creating individual lots.
Mm-hmm.
But the health department, um, they, they, the health department would regulate that.
Okay.
Under their campground.
So, um, yeah, that's basically just more details and maybe I could talk to Rob and Mike separately too, know a little bit more about it so I wouldn't have to take your time or Rob and Mike's later.
Sure.
Okay. Any questions for me at all?
Oh, no.
All right. Thank you very much.
It's your opportunity to ask us.
And I didn't even clear my throat that much either.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Larry Dempsey and I am a, um, residence of Hart Court. There was a display up earlier. I was wondering if you could click back to that, that showed actually our lots up there that back to the, where the Five Park, uh, there you go. Okay, the lot all the way to the right, I can't see that number, but it's at the top, it's at the bottom of their property, but the top right.
Yeah.
That is my lot. I live at one oh three oh three Hart Court. My neighbors are with me. They live two lots over. We both back to the water. Um, Mrs. Thornhill, that was a perfect thing that you said. That block where those cabins are gonna go are far too close to our property. We are on a hill, they are on a hill. We will be directly looking, and I don't see any of that now. I don't see anybody back there. It's big woods. Um, Mr. Ferguson stated that, you know, he was good friends with his neighbors. I've never met him. I've lived there for three years. Um, if you wanna expand your business and you have three hundred and fifty head of bison, why don't you come in and have Weird Beard from Amesville log those trees, get the money and expand your business in bison? Why do we have to be subjected to people down at the creek leaving trash, you know, tearing up our property? Probably more than likely coming across the creek onto our property. That's my biggest thing. And like the first guy that spoke, why don't we have this deferred till there is more information? 'Cause there's clearly not enough for most of you up there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? Yes.
Uh, my name's Nick Walton. I own the, one of the properties that is gonna be closest to the, uh, RV slash campground. And it's just our concern. It doesn't seem like we have enough information, but, um, you know, we've invested. It's our forever home and, and ten acres to be away from people. And I'm just concerned with, you know, the lighting. If, uh, people wander down into your property, um, it's just, there's some concerns there. You know, with, with people venturing out and, and I understand that it's supposed to be secluded and it's gonna be a ways away, but it just seems real close to that Muddy Run Creek. And that's a desirable piece to wander in and take a look at and, and, uh, I just hope we get more information and, and see what the impact's gonna be.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening. Bill McAluso. Um, my property is top, kinda northwest of the proposed area. Um, the presentation that I saw tonight was, to me, very general. Um, like even just some of the, I go camping regularly. Every campground we go to's got rules and regulations that you have to abide by when you sign. As part of paying, you become obligated to those rules and regulations. I think that should be part of the package presented. Um, a lot of campgrounds, we have restrict gasoline motorized vehicles. It's either electric or nothing. That should be something that should be written and defined a little bit clearly, because I don't wanna have motorized vehicles whipping around in my backyard. Um, I had a house built two years ago and the ground had to be perked for a septic system. So just to say we're gonna put a septic system in where the cabins are, who's to say the land is capable of handling the perk? Which then means they have to maybe propose to relocate the cabin somewhere else. Um, no specifics on how, actually the layout of the sites should be more of like a development, showing the lot lines or the plots, where the electric's gonna be, where the water line's gonna be. Very unclear what they're presenting tonight. Um, dump station? Somebody said dump station, but I also heard field. Is that field that's gonna be used to dump campers, is it sized to handle the volume? My house is able to handle four bedrooms. How many bedrooms or how many campers is the existing site able to handle? How's that gonna be measured? Because that means that, that site might have to get changed. Same thing with the well. Is the well truly capable of handling the volume that's necessary and could it impact the surrounding wells? If it's gonna be that much volume and the, it, the aquifer is connected, we may have problems on our property if the aquifer can't handle the well. Um, and I think the last thing should be is, within the documents or within the approval, you may wanna consider to secure the quantity of sites. So in the future, when this board is changed, they don't come in again, maybe request another twenty sites. And before you know it, in ten, fifteen years, we got a full campground. And I plan on being here ten, fifteen years. It's my forever house as well. So a lot more detail, a lot more specifics. I think between septic, water, environmental impacts, perking capabilities, there's a lot of information that needs to be provided before this should even be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes.
I am Robbie Porth. Um, we live in the top left, so we're not really, where they show the current plan doesn't really affect us. So that was a, you know, concern of ours. And you mentioned that no ATVs and, you know, all-terrain vehicles, whatever, through there would be great. So, and that was a concern. Um, maybe the biggest concern is just Scotts Mill being kind of a narrow, windy, up and down road. You know, the whole V-dot, you know, getting that squared away for the commercial turn-in. Um, but, you know, I just hate to be coming down there and getting stuck by a camper sticking halfway across the road 'cause we use Scotts Mill like quite a bit. So, um, other than that, I think our concerns are just limited to really the road. And as long as the sites stay where they currently are, I don't think it'll affect us any other way. That's all.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Donna McAluso. I live in the back far field. Um, I visit their store quite often. I am a, I love their meats. I love their, taking the walking tours. My concern is as, as a camper, um, how they're gonna advertise their campground? And are they gonna do any type of screening of the prospective people who are gonna stay there? As a camper, you said you're a camper. There are rules, but they don't follow them. And you're dealing with the bison, which I know they, they need quiet. When you walk through there, there's no yelling and screaming and running. So I, I would be concerned about that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Declare the public hearing closed. Many comments have been made. Um, commissioners, um, any other discussion? Yes.
Neil, I know there's always a time clock on these things, so what is, what's our time clock?
Yes, ma'am. I was gonna make that point of order. Um, the code that you all pa, uh, recommended to pass, that passed with conditional use permits gives sixty days from the first hearing. And due to the fact that there was a mistake last month and it was deferred, two scenarios could happen. Um, Mr. Ferguson could agree to defer or request to defer himself, which you could grant, or you, you, you need to take a vote up or down as far as the recommendation tonight. So one of the two.
Okay. Okay. Yes.
Mine's a comment. Um, I think that it's pretty clear to all of us that there was a lot of questions that are unanswered and you weren't prepared maybe to answer some of them now that you know what our questions are. I would like to see that you ask us to wait another thirty days and you get some answers to us because the gray area of, I haven't talked to the soil people, I haven't really got the, the V-dot people done. I really am not sure if my little box on my GIS is twenty-five acres or once I put the drain field in, I'm clearing a cabin plus another ten thousand square feet for the drain field. You know, I, I think that, um, I, I cannot support it with the information that we have today. I, I think that we need some more information before I could vote for it, so I just wanna say that.
Any other discussion? Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think this can work. I, I, I actually, I think it's a, a good idea. Um, I think maybe we should condition either maximum occupancy of the sites or, or condition the maximum number of sites if they're looking at possibly a total of twelve, maybe, maybe condition that it could be no more than twelve. Um, but just as a, but I'm, I'm in agreement with everybody else that, uh, you know, the, the sketches that were provided were pretty rudimentary, in fact, very. I, and, you know, recently we looked at the, um, the gun range up by Mount Pawnee and that was pretty rudimentary. I would just suggest to staff is that maybe, you know, we can save a lot of discussion time at these meetings if, if the applicants are, are are led to a point where they provide more specifics before it gets to us. 'Cause not everybody comes in with just scheduled. You know, we've had applicants come in with fairly, fairly detailed, detailed layouts at this stage. I mean, that would just, that would just help a lot, I think.
Yes, a point, point taken, Mr. Price. Um, in the code, it does state that they must meet the criteria for administrative site plans. Administrative site plans, the bar is quite low. Um, so he has met the bar, you know, that bar. Um, you know, I concur that it's, it's, it's oftentimes, you know, useful to have more information, but, you know, we're talking about a land use decision um, or a recommendation. Uh, much of your concerns, I'll share, you know, will be handled with the site plan. Virginia Department of Health, V-dot, those folks have fixed rules. Things like the way the lights shine when you're on the road or whether there's enough screening, you know, some of the finer points, you could condition, you know, those out. Um, and I, I would welcome that because I have no means to do so in the site plan process beyond what's in the major site plan, um, you know, rules. But, you know, point taken. Um, and I do encourage more detail is better, so.
Okay. Had discussion. Um, Chair, entertain a motion.
I got one more question for Neil.
Oh, question this time.
So, could we make a recommendation to the board to reevaluate the code to set that bar higher?
You could do that. That would not necessarily be appropriate under this case. Um, but yeah, you could make, you, you could make that as a body. Um, you know, some kind of recommendation to the board to change the code or to look into that and staff, you know, could, could do that. I will share though that, you know, many of these land use decisions, much of what you're asking requires quite a bit of engineering. And, you know, in the past, you've seen large, I'll just say solar things that are very detailed. I mean, we're talking about twelve campsites. And I'm not diminishing the impact of the neighborhood or anything like that. But, you know, certain uses require, you know, more engineering than others. So I, I, that's a slippery slope.
Mr. Chairman?
If I could just say, I guess I'm just hoping we can find sort of a middle ground to be fair to the applicant so that they're not investing a ton of money into a very preliminary stage where, which, which may not, you know, move forward. Uh, but also give us enough to, uh, to be able to take action on something. So I, you know, there, there's gotta be a balance in there somewhere.
You know, once, once we, if we did approve, we lose any kind of control to request any change 'cause the site plan is gonna be all administrative, correct, Neil?
This would be, this would come back to you in the site.
It would come back. And the conditions that we put on.
And you would be the body approving that site plan. And the conditions you would put on it, hopefully the board would, would take those recommendations and add that to any process that, that would go through.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd just make a comment. I, I agree that we're, we're kinda struggling for facts, uh, some of the facts maybe or the details that won't be available till the site plan. But I also think we need a little bit more in, in-depth information about how you plan to operate this. A lot of times we ask you some questions and you said, oh, that's a good idea, or that's a good question. So I'm not sure we, we've thought through all the process of the rules that you'd have for the, for the campground and how it actually, uh, the operational, you know, uh, rules of the, of the campground itself.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Price?
Just one final comment. I'm, I'm hoping that the applicant will, will see this as, as a useful exercise to see what kinda questions are gonna come up and see what kinda feedback that they're gonna get. So it's, if it's deferred and it does come back, then they can have a, a, a more completely sort of fleshed-out concept. I mean, so the, so the intent here is to sort of help you get to where you wanna be.
Okay.
I think even with the, um, the, the, the gun range application, we had some sort of a layout to some extent. Uh, and I think that's one of the things that's missing. We just have a, a blob basically where things are gonna be. I mean, I think to Neil's point, I mean, even if we just had a, a, a better layout so that we can see where the sites are gonna be. Um, because to Ms. Thornhill's point, I mean, I, I think, and to the neighbor's points, I think if you had a, a larger buffer there, a tree buffer that's gonna stay and you can't see, uh, see or hear it, then it may not be a big of, as big of a concern to, to people. So, you know, I would hope that you're considering it, but, you know, I would also recommend that you defer it.
Okay.
Can, can I speak?
Um, hold on one second. Yeah. So either he can or we can. So, um, two, so, okay. Yeah, 'cause we can defer it too, right?
No, we cannot.
Okay, so it's gonna, gonna have to be, okay. All right. Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. Yes. Mr. Ferguson?
Thanks for letting me speak again. Uh, the, the issue that I see with thirty days more is that what you're asking for is really all this permitting stuff that I have to go. is really all this permitting stuff that I have to go through, meaning like VDOT. Uh, just to get a couple of sites perk tested and everything mapped out, it's gonna take more than thirty days. Um, part of the reason we haven't picked exact locations for each cabin is because as you can see, the two cabins we have are very different. I'm looking at different models that are all glass and they would go into maybe an entirely treed area. So we just haven't, we haven't selected, uh, exactly what we're, you know, planning and putting in. We could be more specific on getting, you know, the five sites and, they're not gonna be anywhere near that muddy run. I can hear, obviously, I made lots of notes, I understand all the concerns. Um, but I'm not, like, if we're doing the, going through all of the agencies that are listed and you're gonna get the plan back again, and by that time, which I'm assuming is gonna take me many months, I can have all of this, these concerns addressed within that as well. Um, that would buy us the kinda time that we need, but thirty days, I, I just feel like we're just kicking this can down the road that we're standing on right now.
No, we can under, understand, uh, understand.
Okay.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be thirty days, though, it can be whatever number you choose. But I think that the location of the cabins, the permanent, quasi-permanent because they're on wheels, and the drain field clearing that would need to occur, needs a visit with a soil engineer of some kind. All the site plans that we see or the people coming in for land division have to have some indication from a soil scientist if the land will perk. So, I think that that would then dictate where the, the blob is for the, the cabin portion of it. I think that the RV portion of it is another septic issue, is the tank big enough to hold the dumping of how many RVs? I mean, how many, yeah, how many dumps you are gonna have. So I think those are the biggest concern when it comes to where the stuff exactly is gonna be located. And that should answer a lot of questions for what you can or can't get done. And I think that that would not be a long process and probably not very expensive if you can get that straight.
Well, I'm, I guess I'm confused as the, the, the order of things because I understood that after you vote, then I have to go through everything you just said after that.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I agree with everything you're saying, and obviously, we wouldn't be putting anything else in or we wouldn't be doing anything more until we've reached all of those stages and addressed all of these topics.
Okay. And you can have a seat right now. You know, um, he, he brings up a very good point, I think, Neil, that, um, had brought up, um, a, a good point earlier also because we're gonna see this again and we can, um, a lot of these things that they are requesting that we're going to, we will be able to get that, um, later be, before we allow it to move even further. I mean, I think, you know, in listening to what everybody else is saying, um, here, I think most of us are in agreement that it will work and can work and, um, and would be, um, a true benefit. But, um, I do see it from a standpoint of, um, you know, the guidelines that we set in place for it is not here tonight, other than the conditions that the, um, staff already has given us. Those conditions, you know, with our, um, permission to go forward with it. And that's all that he's really asking at this particular point, is to be able to go forward. And then we get to wrap it up and shape it into what, you know, we would like to present to the board as to, um, um, you know, what will make it, um, make it, um, more of what we were asking for. Whether, you know, all the, um, agencies that have to show up, and it does take time and, and it is a process, um, to go through, but, um, the noise and all those, we have conditions that are in place, the, the buffer and what we want, those things are in place. So you got a good point.
And, and Mr. Chairman, the, you know, the staff conditions were just suggestions, by all means.
That's right.
By all means, you can add as many detailed, you know, recommendations, and this does have to go to the board.
Yes. Okay, thanks. But I just wanted to, um, share that because I was, um, all in favor too of, um, um, the deferral. But then I understand, um, and then the season, though, that is, uh, is not far, um, either. So to start the process so that you could get some benefit out of it, you know, this year, um, it's gonna take a, um, take a while. So, um, I can, um, understand that, and I think we could work our way through it. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Uh, I just had two things to add, as a, if I was a developer developing the site, I would wanna make sure that where I'm putting this will work. And if, if the perk site ends up being, let's say, over towards Scotts Mill on that side of the site where you have to get your, your, uh, perk site and your drain field to work, uh, if you don't put these cabins and things in substantial conformance with what this is, you're gonna have to go back through this whole process again. So you would be delaying the project by not doing that. If you get to the site plan phase and find out that what is here doesn't work, it's, let's say it's gonna cost five hundred thousand dollars to, to run a, a pump, to pump it over to the septic field on the opposite side of the site. Uh, and you're gonna impact adjoining property owners on the other side of the property that you don't have here, which we haven't reviewed. So you'd have to go back through the planning commission and back through the board to verify that you're in substantial conformance. So I think that's what Cindy was kind of, or Ms. Thornhill was kind of alluding to is the fact that there is a certain amount of effort that you have to do to make sure that where you're trying to put something is viable. Um, I don't know, Neil, if you had anything else to add, but...
Does that fit with the, um, fit though with, um, when we get to the site plan?
Well, the topography's not shown on anything, and it does have some topography back there.
What I'm saying is if you end up moving that blob to the opposite side of the site because that's where the septic is,
Yes, yeah.
Then this won't be in substantial conformance with what we approved.
Okay.
So therefore, it's not compliant. And you'd have to go through that whole process again, which at site plan phase, you don't wanna find that out. You kinda wanna know that the site's perkable now.
And I think what Lance is leading to was I agree with Lance, and I understand the applicant's frustration, if you will. You don't wanna do, have to do too much upfront that is gonna be part of the site plan phase. But I think what Lance is saying, it's almost like a feasibility study upfront to make sure, some of these answers and to make sure, yes, you can have this here, no, you can't have that there, and see if, make sure it's feasible. Because like you said, you could run into some substantial costs if all of a sudden you have to do a non-conventional drain field versus a conventional drain field because of your soils or what have you. Or you thought you could put it here, but now you have to put your drain field way over here. Um, so it is tricky, especially being a non-developer, trying to walk through this yourself and, um, not having someone helping you. But, you know, we typically call it a feasibility study, just to make sure your ideals are feasible and that you don't get too far and then run into some absorb, absorbent costs that may kill the project, so.
Mr. Ferguson, would you come back up? Do you understand what the concerns are
Yeah, absolutely.
of the commission? Um, you know, no one has said that it's not a, a good idea. Matter of fact, a, a lot more positive ideas. But, um, I think, um, it could go both ways. Um, you know, from the standpoint of you looking at it, um, you know, um, the amount that have to be invested and the time that has to be invested to get some of these. And we're not asking for the completion of these things. Because, um, you know, when it, when it comes to someone coming out and they're parking it or, you know, the, um, the surveyor comes out and, um, you know, you get the right person, they get in, get the job done and, you know, in thirty days, you know, should be close to having that done. And then you would feel more comfortable coming in, I think, too. And, and knowing exactly what you're presenting to us is, um, is, is gonna work based on, you know, um, what you have, um, achieved at that point, so. Um, we'd like to, you know, for you to have that opportunity to defer, you know, for, um, whatever period of time you think. And then, um, so that we can move and, you know, when you come back, have more of our answers, um, already addressed. Um, because you only leave us another option. You know, so we just wanted to give you, um, you know, um, that opportunity, yeah.
Yeah, I, I honestly don't understand how this process works. So if, if you vote tonight and you say no,
Right.
then I walk away and I can reformulate and resubmit an application and start the process over?
That could take place, or you could work with me and having known all the, the variables and amend your application before against the board of supervisors.
I mean, I, I can tell you that in thirty days, I can't give you what you're asking for.
You could also, you know, defer the board of supervisors, you know, meeting if you request that and, you know, to give yourself time. You know, I, I'm willing to work with you in either, either case.
Oh, it's, so it can be more than thirty days?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it doesn't have, you could say.
I kept thinking the thirty day thing.
You could say under eighty or two hundred.
So yes, I can, so do I pick the amount of time that I'm asking for deferral?
Yes, yes.
Sixty days?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that'll work.
That's what you're asking for?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
I just saw the, I just saw the concern, and we weren't trying to work against you, um, you know, with this, but we wanted to make sure, and we've seen a lot of these come, or different situations like this before. And it's better to know upfront, um, you know, these things, so, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a point for the applicant. Um, so, and, and procedurally, if we were to recommend approval of a conditional use permit tonight, then it would go to the board for them to approve the conditional permit, right? Basically with the same packet that we've received.
More than, uh, but they can amend the packet.
Yeah. Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is if, if the concerns here are addressed, that will improve your chances of success at the board.
Very good point. Very good point. Your microphone, um, your microphone, Doug.
Based on these technical?
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, how many days you say?
Sixty.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you very much.
Sixty days or?
So are you, are you confident in sixty and you sure you don't need more than that?
Next, right. It can, but I would suggest not to put a day, uh, you know, a number of days. I would say the second regular meeting from now. I don't have a calendar exactly in front of me.
Or third or fourth.
Or the third regular meeting.
We're gonna check that, um, date, so we, uh...
Yeah, to answer your question, I think that to the best of our ability that, you know, aside from hiring engineers and getting all the official complete...
I would, my concern is I just wanna make sure that you feel that you have enough time.
Yeah.
Because, once it's done, it's done, so.
April tenth meeting, so it'd be, um...
Yeah, that works.
April tenth, okay. All right, okay. Um, you can, um, have a seat now, okay? We've had discussion on it, very good discussion, and I think it's benefited, um, you know, everyone in this case. Now the chair entertain a motion if there's no other discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we accept, um, case U dash two-two-four-four-dash-two-three-dash-ones, um, request for referral until our April tenth meeting.
Do I have a second? Okay. Any other discussion? Being an all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed likewise? We would defer it for sixty days, sir. Okay? All right. Now, that's, um...
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Now we need a motion to adjourn to a work session?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We now move into our work session.